It is 5:15, so we will now begin the Adrian City Commission Work Studies Session Pre-Meeting for March 21st. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hughes.
Present.
Commissioner Hope.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gouwes.
Present.
All Commission members present.
At this time, I will hand it over to City Administrator Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have, we're gonna do pre-meeting a little different this time than normally. We were planning to have two items back here in the pre-meeting room. A discussion about the River District project, which would be first, and then some further discussion of trash numbers. Then we were planning to move out to the big room for the open forum on the proposed point-of-sale ordinance. So if anybody is only here interested in that, that will take place in the, in the big room at 6 o'clock. But you're obviously welcome to stay for the rest of it as well. If we get too full now, we can always turn out to the big room for the rest of it as well. So as I said, the first item for tonight's pre-meeting agenda is a discussion of that River District project. We call it the River District, and that is the area that was identified in our new conference of plan developed by the Planning Commission. Basically downtown and west of Winter Street along the river. As an area of opportunity for redevelopment. Fortunately, we have some folks who are interested in doing just that. And so without further ado, I will introduce Dusty Steele, who's gonna tell you about that project. All right, thank you. Show can pull it up on the screen here. First of all, I'm Dusty Steele, and the current chairperson of the Adrian Main Street Board. I'm proud to say the Adrian Main Street Board, we were the DDA, but now we're Main Street select. There's a vision that they came about, and we're gonna talk about how it came about. And we call it the Riverfront Project. It's sort of, you know, it's different words in the project. So if you look at the next slide. First, I want to make a real clear mention how much we appreciate at the Main Street and the DDA. Our great partnership with the City of Adrian. We've done some great things in downtown already, and we continue to have great momentum as we keep moving forward and trying to be changing transformative change of that. So, next slide. Many of you probably heard that these three properties came up for sale last summer. The Telegram, the Access, and the Eagles Building. They're all unoccupied and they're all deteriorating at this time. And there was a group of people that got together and pooled their funds and said, and their primary goal, let's get this light and let's take care of it. Let's take care of it from a social responsible standpoint, and whatever happens after that, but it happened, but we gotta clean this up. So there's some aerial views of those properties. Next slide, please. So the group got together and we met with Eagle and our local contacts with Eagle, and we put in an application for Bronco Grant Loan Project for this. The possible funding sources of the Michigan Department of Environmental Great Lakes Energy, Eagle Bronco Grant, Bronco Loan, and the Ax-31 tax increment. And another thing we want to see RP, we want to help with this project. We'll explain more. Next slide. So we hired a company called Environmental Resources Group, and there's a group of us, I'm just a part of it, trying to help. And, and they did asbestos and subsurface findings. Next slide. So in the beginning, or right off the bat, we were able to look at 133, 155, and 205, and each of them had contamination. If you look at 133, it costed somewhere around $200,000, probably higher now with inflation. The access wasn't so bad, this is demolition and cleanup. And then 205 was another 170, and that's just the mess in the buildings themselves. If you go into the Eagles Building, you better have a hazmat suit on at this point. There's a tremendous amount of damage inside that property. And the Telegram leaves us with some, some challenges. Next. Subsurface findings we found in history in late 1800s, 1920s. This used to be a manufacturing gas plant, or the Citizens Gas, it was a different company by that name at that time. And they just sort of went back and looked at the history of each of these properties, and we found a number of contaminants that are inside the ground. Right? Next slide. But this in here, this is the old gas plant townhouse. Just by, Luke, I just wanted you guys to see that. Well, that's what it looked like, and you can see where we're at in that vision, during Comstock Park looking that way. Next slide. Our vision, future vision, and this is always the shiny object, because you never know what it's gonna be when it's, when we get there. But we hired a company by the name of Studio Intrave, who does design, I think they're out of Lansing. And they gave us three renderings of three, three-story buildings. They'll have one permitting units, one bedroom permitting units, and then two bedrooms up top, and have a great visual over the river. So those are those renderings, this is the back of it, so you get a feel for how nice that would look, like they're in 12 grand properties. Next slide. This is the area of focus, so this group, ABC LLC, and the, and the people that got together to put the vision together. There was another group of stakeholders that saw what was happening, and they wondered why the vision of the look. See what, what we're, what do we really want to accomplish, and what a big focus was, the river, the river, the river. If this river were accessible for recreation, news and kayaks, and cleaned up for that matter, what would that do to our downtown? How big an asset would that ever be to us? But it's next slide. So the vision went a little bit bigger. If you go to the River Raisin Watershed Council, you can see the whole look of Raisin River and all the tributaries and the whole watershed, what it looks like. And work they've done. Next slide. So this group hired a guy by the name of Bob Toyle, he's with the Smith Group. The Smith Group is a very worldwide organization of architects. They did the Detroit Riverwalk, Chicago South Lakefront Framework Plan, Northern the Islands Framework Plan. And they have, if you look at their website, amazing stuff. So Bob's been great, he came, came to visit us, we walked around the entire block, went through the Guanis Trails. And when I was headed home that night, I still saw this camera walking all the way around the downtown, really trying to get a feel for our downtown and what this might look like. The project vision, the river is an incredible asset running through our downtown, through and up, through and all but a few locations. It is out of sight and out of mind. Plan aims to refocus, re-center focus on the river, celebrating its role in the city and creating a vibrant community asset loan, both sides. So goals, rebuild that river, build resiliency, and increase urban residential offerings, because there's a shortage housing. Next. All right, here's the vision. You just get to look at that. So over here, we have Comstock Park, and then you start seeing it. This is the Malmi Trading Company, comes around, and they wanted to re, and put an Oxbow in here. It's created an island, 1.2 acre habitat island. Why? I'll show you later why the tracks funds, attracts opportunity. Over here, we have 3,000 foot of new pedestrian Guanis Trails, and I always like the guanis on that. This is the existing Guanis Trail, we speared off of it. You can drive through and get to the other side, and start working people in there, and to the downtown. See this bridge right here? That was an old bridge of the manufacturing plant, I'll show it to you later, what it looks like today. We also want to restore 1,900 foot of restored riverbank. See how this beautiful drawing, having people sitting real low and down toward the river. So this would slope way down and get close to the river. Then 1,700 have recreated natural riverbanks, so I have these arrows pointing to all those different spots. This is the west side of the river, and there was time in the past where that's already been cleaned up, 10 years ago or so. Not completely, but pretty cleaned up. But this bridge is something special. Next slide. Then residential development. So if we had those apartments, they go right here, I must have made one right there. And what that does is provide walkability, this is, it's gonna be scaled properly, and it fits in our historical context. It's adjacent to parks if we create this park-like setting. And it really comes downtown to our activities and our places to go downtown. Very walkability form, right across the street. This will help with that. This is the Winter Street streetscape in the vision. This Winter Street kicks out the curbs, plants trees all the way down, and lighting, and really brings that Winter Street, brings it into the fold of our downtown streets, makes it look like and act like one of our downtown streets. Close to that. It's just where we can walk across the street without cars flying by at 45,000 hour. So lighting, slowing traffic, and it's gonna resemble why harder downtown streets. Next. So I think of projects that were transformative in our past, 1974. Comstock Park was visioned and developed, and it was a great transformative project that's beautiful today. Of course, we all love it on Christmas time, don't we? It's amazing. And these are just different visions of what they had at that time. And I will say that the family that supported that is involved in this, finding this to be a very, very important project for our future. They'd like to see this continue, this beautiful transformation. Next slide. So I was digging into the River Raisin Watershed Council, and I wanted to see how much work has been done about cleaning up the river. And they've got some great information, I'll point you to this website, go check it out. You have abstraction tables, you have pictures of all the obstructions, depth issues, obviously the water's dirty. We're gonna have to deal with it, but I think this project takes us to focus on that river, so we can start thinking big, start thinking real big. This is a picture I saw in here with the river, and they have photos, and they did a ton of photos of obstructions and various things that are wrong with that. And that's that line right there. Same map. Next slide. Here's a picture of that, just a little close up. These are the kind of things you see throughout the entire river. There's like 90 of them in the city, that's alone. But this is the bridge, look at that thing. We can restore that, make it look good. Make it a cross path for bikes and walkers, and bring it, bring that back into the fold, get rid of these dams and the like. Next slide. So our architect, Bob, he's very well connected, obviously, and he knows which agencies to go to to get these types of funds. And so when it goes to the Department of Natural Resources, we look at the Natural Resource Trust Fund, Fish and Wildlife Habitat Program, and the Wildlife Habitat Program. That's all about that island, that Oxbow, creating a natural flood plain or flood mitigation, and resiliency, a natural resiliency. And that, and their Tac Transfer Transportation Alternative Program is where we'll get those funds for all those trails you see that I had in there, I didn't really highlight them a lot, but there are a lot of them on that property that we've overdone. FEMA has Building Resilience Infrastructure in Communities, US Fish and Wildlife Services, the National Foundation for Wildlife, in a Southeast Michigan Resiliency Fund, and the Sustain on Great Lakes Program. We're working with Eagle, but they also have something called Non-Point Source Program. Then the Michigan Trail and Greenway Alliance, and Land and Water Conservation Fund will leave no stone unturned when it comes to looking for funds. My goal here tonight on that is to really have the city become applicant to these agencies, and take ownership of this project and say, hey, let's move forward. It's a long project, this isn't something that's gonna happen in a year or two years. But you have to start with a vision, and you have to start talking about how can we make this happen. Next slide. So we broke the project down by area, the site restoration on the west side of the river, site restoration on the east side, the trail, public park and open space, and then all those streetscape renovations. This is a federal project, federal funding, streetscape, and so there's just different ways you go about getting those funds. Next slide. This is a spreadsheet, those are all those names of those agencies, and what you see is this number here, which is $25 million. We do believe that we can, we can get grants of up to eight and a half or more at this point. And we do believe there's other ways of getting access to funds at Lansing that could make this project more of a reality and more feasible for everybody involved. Next slide. So the timeline on this, you know, the Spark Project, the Inertia Project, the one that really got everybody thinking big, was, was the grabbing of those flooded properties and saying, what can you do with them? How can we make this a better thing? There's shortage of housing, we need to do something about it, we need to give us more people in downtown with traffic. So this is coming around right now, if we can get our application approved and we walk through it, maybe we can get some demolitions done this year on that property. Next year, we'd like to start construction of those parks. May take two years, there's a little movement here, we don't know which way it's gonna go, but this is where we're headed, and this is our focus project right now. This is what we'd like to see take place now. Again, this is, this is a private endeavor, and at this point in time, all of this other is a wraparound public. So it's private-public partnership, and we all are gonna work hard together, as, you know, as a downtown Main Street, this would be amazing, right? So that's our timelines. I have no ask of you except to take application and believe in this project, I've met with most of you, that this project is something we start striving for and putting, and building those relationships. If you go back, say, give me a show, or two, two, three. The key to this, and what we keep hearing, is having a great relationship with these agencies. These agencies and other organizations, or other cities and municipalities all over our state are well tuned into this. They have teams working hard on all these grants, and they have relationships with those directors and all of those different agencies. And when things pop up like ARPA funds and different things that happen, you know, they're ready, they're ready to hit it. When things pop up in deadlines on all these every year, they sequentially hit these applications and get theirselves some funds. So I'm devoted to helping, I want to bring to everybody's knowledge, or bring it out to the public now. And I just, thank you all for this time, and if you have any questions, I'm, I'm here to answer. All right.
Can you stick around, because there's gonna be a public comment after the trust session before we go out there?
Okay.
Because we're gonna do discussion just on this, and there, I think there's gonna be some public questions possibly.
All right, no problem.
Thank you. I appreciate it, thank you.
Dusty, there is, there is off-street parking included with your project. There is, yes, thank you. So Mayor, next, on the pre-meeting agenda is further discussion of our trash pits. Matt is here, a couple of you had asked that we drill down a little bit on the numbers and understand what they're gonna be over the course of the contract and what components those numbers are, and so Matt's here to explain that and answer any further questions that you might have. Now, why don't, why don't you start by just breaking down the rate, what the components of the rate are, and explain the average.
So going back to option five, which is what it seemed like the, what was favored last meeting, consisted of a 95 gallon tow for trash, a 95 gallon tow for recycling, bulk trash collection every other year. Couple weeks in the spring, a couple weeks in the fall of yard waste collection. That total cost was $240 per resident per year. That, that is the average for the five-year term. So it's lower in the front year and then higher at year five, so that's just averaged out over the, over the course of that contract.
And with, now, the proposal would be charged the same rate through all those years?
Yeah, yeah.
So 240 breaks down into what components?
So that, that covers everything that, that option five entails. Trash, recycling, the yard waste, bulk collection, everything that we had seen in our survey results, everything that we've seen from residents voicing their opinions. It's, it seems to be what, what everyone has pushed their opinion in wanting. And we did send out a survey, and I do have the results of the survey, I think those are passed on to you guys as well. But the survey did favor all those options that we discussed.
Is it, is it possible to break down the 240 into a cost of the basic trash service, a cost of the tow, a cost of the recycling service? Or is it kind of end up blending together based on how that's worked?
I don't know if I have that sheet with me.
I believe I have it sort of broken down. So.
Yeah, go ahead, ma'am.
So I put together a, not a spreadsheet, just an email to myself, discussed it, so I could understand the cost. Because there were a lot of figures thrown about during our last meeting, and even I didn't understand what exactly we were paying for currently and, and what we would, you know, be proposing. So I looked at three different things. So our current trash bill is $120, paid four times per year, not on our tax bill separately billed. We'll get to that later.
It's $120.
$20, sorry, $120 divided by four, so $30 per quarter. If you get a recycling tow, it's about $32 per year, and that is billed separately. Again, get to that. Yard waste and compost sites are billed just part of that. And then our bulk collection cost over the last couple of years is an addition that comes out of our general fund of $125,000 to $160,000, I believe. So that, that cost is being put on the taxpayers' bill, just not on your bill. You are paying for that. Taxpayers are paying that $125,000 to $165,000 when we do bulk. So that $120 per year is a little misleading. If we took that $125,000 to $160,000 and broke that out to every resident, I'm sure that the 120 would go up. So I looked at option two, which is essentially staying with the six bags, not doing bins. At a minimum, the cost is going to go up to $171. And that's at a minimum, just because that's the bid, and we haven't had a raise in our trash bills for six, seven years. So for six, seven years, we paid the same amount. Well, as you guys all know, gas goes up, insurance goes up for employees, everything. So at a minimum, it's going to go to 171, we do nothing else. 171. If we include recycling, if you want an optional recycling bin, it's gone up to $55 per year. So like, we pay, my family pays $152 per year for six bags and a recycling bin. At a minimum, if I want to keep that same service, it's going to go up to $226 per year. I know, okay? So yard waste and compost is still a part of that. I want to be clear, is bulk trash every other year a part of that? The, the option two.
It is.
Okay, all right, all right. So, so that was an option two, that was essentially keeping what we have currently. Whatever you have currently, you can keep it, it's going to go up. Now, option five is what we looked at during our last meeting. And that's getting bins. So a trash bin is $195 per year. And trash bin would hold your six bags or more, depending on what size bags you have. And then it's an additional cost for the recycling bin of $50 per year. So it's $240, $245. So, and that would include yard waste, compost, and bulk collection. So you have from, at a minimum, you're going to be paying 171 to a maximum of 245. So we're talking a difference of 70 bucks a year, per year, difference of $70 per year. So that's, that's the cost. But we're also, you have to remember, in that $245, we're not paying that $125,000 to $165,000 for the bulk collection every year that's coming out of the general fund. And if we do this and put it on our tax bills for the summer, we are saving $10,000 per year just in stamps. Just in postage, $10,000 per year to mail those bills out every three months. Which is just, it floors me that we're still doing that. So hopefully that will happen. Now, I understand that there are concerns from the public, and, and, you know, the elderly people with ADA issues. That's not a problem for our contractor. They, they deal with this every day. And, and you can put out your trash the same as always if you can't wheel a bin down.
Does it matter if our Stevens right here?
Yes.
Can you explain how that works for a person that would have disability or would be an elderly person?
So in our, in our experience, it is a task that the city would manage, but you would provide to us those addresses of the folks that meet that requirement, meet that status. And then those folks would show up on the route sheet that they're not a towder user or a cart user, they would be a bag user. So, but it, it's based on the ADA regulations or qualifications. And from our standpoint, it's as simple as providing us with that address. Again, that's on the route sheet, and the driver would collect in that fashion, so. It's a simple process for us. Thank you.
And, you know, Mary makes some great points, she did a good job of getting figures out there. But the reason why the, history, you know, so the reason why the city went from a, a tax bill billing with, you know, when it comes to trash, because they had a cash flow problem back when the housing market crashed, and they took it off the tax rules, and then they built, you know, they directly built the, you know, the customers. So there's, the mayor and myself, the commissioner Strayer, met with some communities, you know, that's combating blight. And one of the main components, they said, is that one of the, one of the main things to help that is why this collective body is being so aggressive in it, you know, with blight, is that animals getting in trash and tearing, tearing up bags, and, and you have trash in yards, you know, you have the smell. And most communities have totes with the lid, and that was one of the key components of combating blight and clean your city up and make it look cleaner, more presentable. I've had realtors tell me that you don't show homes on Tuesdays in Adrian because of the trash bags, you know, down the road. So, you know, according to, you know, Mary's figures, which, which are accurate, it's essentially under $6 a month difference going this route than it would be to stay with the same service we have when it comes to the bags. And like Commissioner Robert said, I understand the concern about, you know, getting the totes out. That's why we're trying to brainstorm here on how to, how to help the, our senior citizens and, you know, and other combat that. But, you know, the totes are a, are a blight fighting mechanism that's a small component of the bigger picture. But that was one of the reasons why, why I was so stuck on having totes, because this makes the city look cleaner, but also helps in that, in fighting blight.
You know, and, and I had, you know, also done some figures and had some discussions with the city administrator. And, you know, I know that many on a fixed income are looking at this more on a monthly basis, even just, that's how they look at it for their budgeting, for figuring everything out. So, you know, currently, obviously, it's $10 a month, the bare minimum, and that's just because everything's going up. My grocery bill has doubled, everybody's bills are doubling everywhere with inflation and just the high labor costs, and everything is going up. The bare minimum, if we didn't even change anything, we did right now, is $14.25, okay, a month. That's just the bare minimum. But there's, I know there's concern about the tote, you know, and like we said, you know, I, I was concerned as well about the elderly. I like that there's an alternative. That tote is $2 a month, that's what it is. City Administrator and I talked about it, it's $2 a month, that, that takes it to the 1625 a month. I, I still feel if there is an option, you don't have to take, you know, you, the man, the tote, you would have to do like, on like recycling. I mean, I guess you don't, if you have like a three unit, you could, you could just have one, you're still gonna be paying for three of them when it comes to that. But, you know, if there is that option to take care of our elderly population and those that are handicapped or cannot get this towed out, I, I know that is a high concern. I've received a lot of feedback on that concern. If there is an option, you know, you, you do need to look at it, it is, it's $2 more a month. But to have that tote, to not have to go pick the garbage up all over your yard, all over your neighbor's yard, thrown everywhere. It happens a lot in my neighborhood, cats get into it. You know, I, I guess my one thought on this is that I just can't see going with option five, this is my personal opinion, and doing mandatory recycling. I know it's not really technically mandatory, because somebody can opt out of it, but they still have to pay that. And just upping that up to that $20.42 a month, it, or something like that, it was close, it was close to $21 a month. Just, that's a major hype. I, I feel like we're gonna have inflation. It's, no matter what, we've gone up $4.25 if we do nothing different than we've already. if we do nothing different than we've already done per month. You know, so it is an added two dollars for that tote. But, you know, the city minister had a really great point when we had a great discussion on Wednesday about this. Somebody like my neighbor who only puts out one bag of trash can wait and just do it once a month. It's not, they don't, you don't have to haul that tote out there every week. I mean, when it gets hot out, that might be really gross. Yeah, really like that. But in the winter, you know, you know, so there's, there's always that, and it's not something where they would have to have it out there. You know, but like we said, if, if there is an alternative, but that's, you know, what I was really concerned with as well and feeling a lot of phone calls about was the concern with trying to get it to the curb. And I know there was quite a few, we received quite a bit of feedback on viewpoint on that as well, Greg. So, I don't know. That's just, I just, you know, I, I really looked at this from a, I know my grocery bill has doubled. I know things are costing a lot more right now. In general, all of my bills have gone up this year. And unfortunately, that's just the way, you know, and, and that it's headed, and we haven't had a rate increase in a long time. And, and no matter what, we're looking at that, that four dollar and twenty-five cent, you know, increase no matter what.
Can I read on this, ma'am? I talked to City Hall in Saline and Clinton, Tecumseh, and Monroe. Saline and Clinton have ninety-five gallon totes for trash. They have ninety-five gallon recycled totes that are picked up every two weeks. Cost is put on the summer taxes. Clinton has had this program in place for more than eight years. No complaints, very happy. Tecumseh, you can still put trash, you can still put trash out in bags. But I looked at their trash agreement, and they are moving down the road to ninety-five gallon totes in the future. That's the way I at least read their, their agreement. At this point, they can get a ninety-five gallon tote option, and they wanted to do that so that residents could get a feel. They also, but they do provide a smaller tote for recycling. The one thing that I learned from a few different people is that whereas the tote is, the recycled tote is smaller, they have issues with it because it doesn't have a lid. So if the day that you put out your recycling, there's any wind at all, the recycling is around the neighborhood. So that was an issue. Monroe, I had an interesting conversation with their engineering department. They have unlimited bags, okay, that you can put out. But they said they really want to go to the ninety-five gallon tote, but they can't do it until they work out a street parking issue that they have right now. And that they have been actually getting some feedback from some residents who, they want to go that way. But they have so many people, I guess, that park on the streets that they need to work through that issue first. They have, they provide everybody with a sixty-four gallon tote for recycling, and they pick that up every week. So these are communities who are, are recycling on a regular basis. They're providing totes to everyone on a regular basis. Cost is getting dibbied up, just like we've talked about here. I had an interesting conversation with the clerk's office in Saline, who, because I, I told them, I said, you know, I'm, I'm feeling a little bit of pushback from some people on recycling. And she says, well, Saline, our people are very serious about recycling. And she said, we had a program in place where we were doing recycling for batteries. And when COVID came along, they had to put that plan on hold. I don't know why. But she said they got a lot of pushback from their citizens for putting that program on hold. And then she said to me, "Don't worry about your citizens and recycling. It all starts in the schools." Kids learn about recycling. They learn about the importance of recycling. They take that information home. They educate their parents. It's a smooth transition. Thank you. I personally, when we left here two weeks ago, I thought we gave Administrator Elliott pretty clear direction that we were all on board with the fifth option. And in my opinion, totes are about taking pride in the community, okay? Like Commissioner Health said, I mean, this is all part of fixing our blight issue that we have. It'll, it'll give Adrian a much cleaner look. This is something that other communities have been doing for years, so it's not a new idea. We're not breaking ground here. You know, we are basically following some proven ideas that are working. As far as recycling, we, I say we as in Adrian, need to identify as a progressive community and encourage curbside recycling. We, again, as Adrian, we're never going to be, we're never going to be able to say that we were on the leading edge of recycling. But I think that it's time that we make it a priority like other progressive communities have done. Making the totes available to everybody, it's a good first step. I don't like the, the term mandatory because it's not mandatory. And if you feel that recycling is not important in Adrian or Michigan or anywhere else, you don't have to take part. All you have to do is give the tote back. Stevens will take the tote. So, and it's already been mentioned here that there hasn't been any increase in waste disposal prices in more than six years. And yes, I know that totes add some cost to the overall bill. But as, as already been expressed here, we're talking about minimal costs, and we're talking about serious advantages to the community. Not only to, to the community, but the environment as a whole. And also, the whole idea of putting trash, the, the waste disposal cost on the trash bill, on the, on your tax bills, this again is not new. As Commissioner Health explained before, we used to do this. And so again, not a new idea. So I know that change is difficult, but I really, really think that the option five is the way we should go.
And it's not a tax. It'll be a line item, correct, on the tax.
It's just not like it on there for convenience, like we don't have to sum up the stuff.
Right. I mean, I got three, I got three today in the mail, or it might have been Friday. All automatic payments for my properties that I still gotta mail in, you know, the city's still mailing it. So it's like, it seems like we're burning money on doing that. And, and we have the means now to be able to absorb that cost, you know, when it comes to people that don't pay the trash bills. So that's how we look at that, at option.
Well, and that was one of the questions I had for you, Matt. Is this something, just because, you know, this is hard to swallow no matter what, just because costs have increased, and generally, we haven't had one in a while. My question for you was, is there, is it possible at all to start at like an option six and then go to an option five with an extra, or increment it in so that it's, so that everyone gets used to and adjusted to that cost increase? Because it's, then it's not just a huge hit the first time? I didn't know if that's a possibility.
Well, generally, when you go into contract, it's for the whole, like, contracts. No matter what option you choose.
Yes. Well, I know we have a lot that wants to have public comment, and we need to get out to this forum out there as well. Are, are you okay with feeling the public comment right now? Or is everybody?
Well, I, I mean, I guess, staff standpoint, we need to know what guidance is, what we're bringing back. Terms of getting this contract.
I would still support option five.
I never wavered a bit.
I mean, if you go option six, I could, like, I just seem, I kind of have my diagram. It's, it's, if you recycle, you're actually paying more than it is for everybody to have. You know, less than everybody pays for recycling, that's more.
Right.
That's my position.
Are you coming?
I'm coming.
Yeah, me too.
I mean, if we're still gonna listen to public comment.
Oh, absolutely.
This is.
We're not, we're not voting out tonight. We can always change your mind later.
Right. This is not a vote.
We'll have a resolution point if we can either.
You still put it on tonight?
There, if you want to do public comment before we go out.
All right. So at this time, we will have public comment. And just for the record, please state your name and address, and there is a three-minute time limit. And for those in here, well, they can hear it online too, but you will hear the timer go off if you hit your three-minute time limit, and we will ask you to stop at that point. Thank you.
I have some concerns. I'm one of those older people, having retired. And I have, have this one second, it's the driveways in my neighborhood. For me to push the tote down, that tote's gonna take me with it. Right now, in winter month, I drag it along the side of the road. My garbage always goes on my yard because the street slows down too. So my concern is, where am I putting that? I usually have one bag, and I recycle at the county recycling, so I don't pay for that. I'm big concerned though, getting that tote down, and how do I go about addressing that? Because I did end up in the ER this winter, taking my garbage down. And I no longer shovel because I have some bad issues. And so I have to wait for somebody to come to do that for me. And I don't, I mean, I don't think I look old, but that's my story, and I don't know how to address that. Where am I putting the tote? The school bus has a terrible time coming around the curve. The garbage truck goes over the curve, so now that's all fracked. So that's my concern. If you could answer that, I guess I would be on board. Plus, I have neighbors who have dialysis, and she drops her car, her garbage drop in her car, which I did this winter too. We put it in our car from the garage, take it down, drop it off. I would like to answer to.
Since we have a lot of new people here, we want to discuss that this is not a time for us to have a discussion. We may not dialogue back with you, but when we get, after a public comment, we can. Go ahead.
Mark Murray, one zero zero, Horsum. So Mary and I spent a little time in a geezer community in Florida that has those totes. And they can have their issues, just like you described, that need to be addressed individually to help folks. What we notice is, when people are sick or infirm, a neighbor will help. There's ways to get it done. And the totes are really effective. And we, I, I didn't like the idea at all when I thought about it, but then after we use some despite. The other thing that we should know is, there was an article in the local paper that said all the totes, all the pickup will be with one person in the truck within the next few years. That currently with, the way it's done, there's two people, one in the back, one in the front. But the truck in, in, in our community has a mechanical arm, so it's one person doing the pickup. And eventually, we're gonna have to have that here in Adrian, no matter what. Or we're gonna pay really through the nose to have two people on a truck doing a trash pickup. So in the end of the day, the totes are gonna be what we all have to do, one way or the other. But we will need to help people who have particular problems. And maybe we could go to service clubs and figure out a way to have a list of people that need some solution that we can figure out how to do that.
Done, Negron, one fifty-nine hours. Madison, Adrian, Michigan. I just want to say, you know, it's not apples and apples. Saline, Clinton, Tecumseh, do not share the same poverty rate that we had in the city. And the gentrified community, we just heard referred to as geezers, deserve more respect than that. So what, what I would ask is that if we're going to be progressive, we include others. That's the first sign of progress. So right now, it sounds like a lot of platitudes to the folks that are gonna be impacted the most by it. I just ask us to think about them, the vulnerable community. Thank you.
Four twenty-two, South Wink Street. I'll just say it again. And often to make this a little bit easier for residents as we're rolling out, besides being empathetic and hearing where the help is needed, also do subsidization. It's not that many households. If you subsidize a few dollars or so per household, that doesn't make a mess of it. Or to have a, some sort of program so those who need can get subsidy. There are options. It might take some effort, but there are options.
I have one bag every two weeks of garbage. And I want to have a ninety-five gallon tote up in there. I mean, that's kind of ridiculous. And recycling, I take it to the compost, I mean, the recycling center all the time, or once a month I go. And that ninety-five gallon tote, I'd be lucky if I filled it a third of the way. I still have to pay for that tote if I turn it back in. I don't like that. That's forcing it onto the homeowners and stuff. Not right. You're gonna turn the tote back in, not gonna use it. You shouldn't be charged for it. That's my feeling, Doug. I think a lot of older people, same way.
Larry Condon, eleven ten, Scottsdale Drive. I want to know where I'm gonna store two totes. That's my question. Then another thing is, we're, I, I know you're, you know, basically laying the groundwork for a price increase. Well, that's what a contract is. What was the contract? Five years? Okay, let the trash people take care of that contract for five years. Okay, now then we get into another contract. I mean, you know, it's one of those things, everything's going up, everything's going up. It's like they're trying to prepare everybody to be ready for it. Well, the main thing is, where you get more bang for the buck. But I want to know where you're gonna store the totes. I don't have room.
Kirk Valentine, nine sixty-nine West Miami Street. Historical perspective, unlike what Commissioner Health said, I was on the commission when we changed the system. And the reason we changed it is we had a trash millage at that time. And everybody paid the trash millage, including businesses. And what we were trying to do is be a, a community that was friendlier to businesses. So we removed it off the millage, and then we just went to a system where it was pay-as-you-go. Bulk trash collection was never part of the agreement that we made with the citizens when we dropped it off of the millage. The system was just for curbside pickup only. Over time, as most government programs, this has grown into, we're gonna do this big bulk pickup, which has turned into a huge bill, as we all knew it would. And, you know, I'll debate you all day on effectiveness, because I'll walk you around the neighborhood and there's still just as much trash as there was before. So I understand trash is a difficult thing. I've sat just right where you're at, and I had these debates. You know, do we use totes? Do we mandate recycling? How do we go? One thing I'd ask you right now, you know, in the environment that we're in, and we're looking forward at an awful lot of unknowns, do we want to lock ourselves into this substantial of a price increase across the board for the entire community? Because I'm gonna go back to the conversation that we had, you know, probably fifteen years ago when we changed the system, is we were trying to make Adrian a little friendlier, especially to our businesses. That's why the millage was taken off. I do like that you're doing my item on the tax bills, because that will save an awful lot of bureaucracy within City Hall as far as getting the buildings out. But I don't think going this full stroke at this particular time is enough.
If I had one more question.
I just wonder, is it okay to ask them a question about the?
You can after we're done here because you already had public comment once, but yes, you have. Is there somebody online that is trying to on Zoom that is trying to get on for public comment?
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, okay, you can hear me. Okay, great. This is Nancy O'Connor, one three eight four Harrison Place. Um, I I just have a question and I know you probably can't answer it during um or at this time. But I read today's Daily Telegram and I'm kind of confused as to um, City Administrator Greg Elliott's comment. And I will quote him and it says, City Administrator Greg Elliott said residents will be charged for totes. If the commission decides to select the proposal from Stevens, but they have the right to turn to totes back in and not use them. Mandatory is not really mandatory, Elliott said, but it's an option for the residents to utilize. My question on that is, does he mean the recycling or is he speaking of the trash? Um, and then my next comment is, um, first and foremost, although Commissioner Help said that the cost of business is going up, that was said in a pre meeting, um, the last commission meeting. I'm sure you can all realize that a hundred percent, hundred and four percent increase in the price of services is a little more than just a cost increase. Second, as someone with a disabled son who lives at home, we tend to have more trash in the usual household due to medical supplies that cannot be recycled. And yes, I do pay for recycling. One tote would not be sufficient for a family. And yes, sure, we could pay for a second, but we shouldn't have to when there is nothing wrong with our current system of using bags. I asked for different options presented to the commission from Michelle Dewey. Several are just as feasible with also having a smaller price tag. I'm not against a reasonable increase in the cost of services. However, I am against an unreasonable rise in the cost of services, which would which would restrict residents' ability to put their trash out to the curbs sufficiently. Thank you.
Somebody else was also trying to come on.
Can't tell cars, one ten South Focus. Uh, I support totes as far as the cost goes. I mean, once you live in the city and you don't have kids, you're still paying taxes, so for schools. So, you know, hey, this is just one of those blocks. Um, I would be interested, you guys spend a lot of time talking about these animals. And I was hoping we could maybe put on the city website some of the pictures of these ferocious cats that are tearing up these bags. Because I've lived here since two thousand and six and I haven't seen these ferocious cats. And I'd like to get some pictures um of them. But that's a comment is in regards to last meeting, I was cut off during public comment because the city has a time limit and I understand their time limit. Um, I listened to and Mr. Galouli, I hope you're listening. Um, I listened to the planning commission meeting this past week and it's crazy. You got people talking out and, you know, there's no control over the meeting. So you got Commissioner Roberts is sitting in the meeting, didn't didn't do a word about it. You got Mr. Elliott. So how is it that during this meeting, you guys can cut me off at a certain point in time? But during the planning commission meetings, anybody can talk and do whatever they want, whatever they want. Mr. Galouli, the floor is yours.
There are no more public comment. We, um, just to address really quick, that is why there is going to be an option that you won't have to pull a tote down. They they said that if you get on the list.
But I still have to pay for it.
Yeah.
And I still have to pay for the recycling, which I always.
I just wanted to clarify that again.
Yes, I understood.
All right. Um, at this time, we are going to move out into the chambers for the point of sale inspection open forum. And are you going to interview?
Sure.
I I mean, I thought it's a regular meeting.
Okay, so welcome back, everybody. This continuation of the city commission's pre meeting discussion. And this time is set aside until seven o'clock to hear comments regarding a proposed point of sale ordinance. The city has not yet drafted such ordinance, but is interested in exploring the idea of having one. Uh, for those who don't know, the idea of a point of sale ordinance is that when a property sells, there's a an inspection done of that property to make sure that it's in compliance with the property maintenance code, which is a a general code that most communities adopt regarding the upkeep of property. Uh, the commission has expressed interest in exploring that on an exterior only basis for property sales uh in the city. There are about five to six hundred residential properties that sell every year. Uh, and so the commission has thought that might be uh, an interesting step, next step to take in their general blight remediation efforts that they've been interested in and been pursuing now pretty seriously for uh, oh, probably the last year and a half or so, based on exploration that a a group did best practices in other communities. And and this is one of those things that those other communities all pointed to as uh, an important component of that uh, of that effort. So without further ado, uh, the floor is yours. We do have a three minute time limit for public comment. Uh, so uh, when you uh, give your comment, please give your name and address uh, and come to the podium so that the mic can pick you up. Uh, we'll start in the uh, in the chambers here with comments and then uh, move to Zoom after everybody who's in house here has had a chance to speak. So like I say, the the floor is yours. Feel free to come up with Mike if you've got something to share.
Hi, most of you know me. Either way, I'm Ben Negron, live at one fifty nine North Madison. Some of you know me as the founder of Ola, Hispanics of Lenawee Alliance, of whom I'm here on behalf of. I'm on behalf of those hundreds of residents on the east side in Adrian, both renters and homeowners who have questions and fears about the proposed point of sale tax being considered by this commission. I want to first thank the commission for taking this on. It's got to be brutal work. It really does. And I mean it with all sincerity. The progress that needs to be made to remediate the blight has been on and on and on for more than thirty years or longer, at least in seventy eight, when I first moved here to the east side, has been a bane. I have parents who own properties that they rent out to residents on the east side who have long complained to me about the slow degradation of properties right next door to the church that they have and the homes that they have. Constantly asking me to get involved in contacting the owners who tell me not going to do it. Meaning they're not going to do anything about the blight in their homes. So I want to just make sure that I am heard, that I am for something to help us fight that blight. I want that to be clear and transparent. The homes and the church on Frank Street and Anne stands proudly, beautifully and well kept, while directly across the street and right next to it is danger. Danger from the homes that have been allowed to go on and the stuff that goes on inside of them that I don't have the time to tell you about. And I'm sure you can imagine. The landlords on the east side, like my parents, who've kept up their properties for years and years, have been waiting for something to finally happen to address blight in the city of Adrian. I want to be clear again that we are in favor of something to help us do that. Those landlords care about their tenants and their renters, like my parents do. Those landlords are not slum lords. In a recent visit to Wyandotte, Michigan last week, as I did some driving around, taking pictures and getting to know some of the community organizations in Wyandotte, I can tell you that we're not being given the entire story in this, in the Daily Telegram. The question I have is if we traveled all the way to Wyandotte to look at the areas they wanted us to see, did you also travel to Drexel Park, to Sunnyside and some of the places on the east side where I grew up? And where my parents still live and my family still live? And hundreds of these folks that I just told you about still live today? I would ask you to do so. Thank you.
Thomas R. Fallhaber, four nineteen Budlong Street. I'm seventy years old. I served as a city commissioner here from eighty five to eighty nine and again from twenty eleven to twenty eighteen. Some of you know me, some of you don't. I've worked hard to do something about the blight here for decades. I've owned property here since the nineteen seventies. My properties, like Mr. Negron said, I'm proud of my properties. I have one over here by Monument Park. I got people around me that don't keep their properties up. I'm suffering for it. I go to sell that thing someday. I'm going to take a hit of a few thousand dollars because of the condition of the neighborhood. I'm on the edge of a a a area that's not that good, but I'm trying to make it nicer. My property is are nice and I appreciate Commissioner Health's effort. When I was a commissioner, hardly anybody here was interested in blight. I talked about it. We went through two two city administrators that did not buy into the blight blight problem here. I was raised in the nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties. I remember when this city was sharp. You went on the east side, it was vibrant. Even the west side is experiencing blight now. Our code enforcement, we've got two of them now, they're not getting the job done here, folks. I've been told by internal, when I was still a commissioner, I was spoken to by internal people that trusted me. This job's not getting done here. You guys, you've already got a, we already got a vacant building ordinance, which I'm sure is not being enforced. We've got a property maintenance code that was passed when I was a commissioner. I'm certain it's not being enforced here. People are, you're losing, going to lose a good people in this community, the educated people that got a brain in their head because they're getting sick and tired of dealing with a city that's in a deteriorating condition. There's been some victories here. I look at some of the properties here, like this old Wrigley store over here farm that's been boarded up. That gentleman that owns that is one of the biggest slum lords in this town. I had to name his name, but I won't. Everybody already knows, there's other people like this gentleman. They don't have a for rent sign on the building. They don't have a for sale sign on the building. It just sits there and rots right on a main, on a state highway here. It doesn't have to help our image one bit. I'll tell you, I'm tired of it. If you guys don't do something about it, I'm going to sell it and just get out of this business and move out of here. I don't live here part time. I live here part of the year out of town as it is. I love this city. This is my hometown, but I'm getting sick and tired of the same battle for forty, fifty years. I'm just getting weary. I'm getting old, I'm getting tired of fighting the system here. I don't think enough of you care about this to do anything about it. And I'm, that's what I encountered when I was here and I'm just, I'm sick of it. So I, some of the people that are going to oppose this don't even live here. They're people that themselves own substandard property, perhaps some of the realtors. And I'm telling you, these people are out for number one, they don't care about this city. They're here to make money. They don't have rental properties in their own town because they clamp down to some of the out county towns. They don't deal with, they don't allow the crap that goes on here. And I'm telling you, if we clamp down on some of these people, we'd have a nicer community. We'd get a better class of people moving into the city and staying in the city. Thank you.
Good evening. Casey White, twenty two sixty Taylor Road. I'm here on behalf of the Lenawee County Association of Realtors. So while I live in Madison Township, I also own a house in Adrian. But more importantly, I represent home sellers and buyers in the city of Adrian. Last year, I helped thirty five home buyers and sellers in the city of Adrian. The majority of those were lower priced homes. We're here to urge the city to table the idea of the point of sale ordinance. We would like to see the city enforcing the ordinances we have in place now for blight and rentals. Get those streamlined and uh, maybe they need revamped. It's our goal to promote homeownership and we do feel that this will hinder that, especially for those with the lower income. Many of the buyers in that price bracket are using loans that will require many of the things you're concerned about to be repaired anyway. So this.